We begin with a budget update, Michelle, we have the budget committee with us in here.
We do, we have Christine and Michael. Welcome you guys, thanks for joining, and Monica, welcome. Can we get the presentation?
You have more packet too.
Yeah, there is a presentation in your packet as well. It's gonna look very familiar, we have had multiple budget development informational sessions so far this year. We've visited about our general fund, we have looked in two separate segments of our special revenue funds, which are restricted, we've talked about those. And tonight, we're gonna talk about kind of the last group of funds, major funds that we work with, and kind of the purpose of those funds, so. Basically, go ahead and just get started, I have hopefully soon, the presentation will be out, but the first part is really familiar for folks who have been through these sessions before. The agenda slide talks about what we're gonna cover tonight, which is what I just shared with you. We have a slide about the budget development process, and that talks more about the requirements under local budget law, the role of the committee, and the process itself, and timeline, so. We're preparing for our proposed, oh, yay, thank you, for our budget to be proposed later this month on the 4th of July. Special thank you to Jeff Jones here, who produced them on screen and in the back room. He is really critical to pulling that budget document together and providing a clear message to people. So that's something, something to look forward to. Probably the most important thing, if we advance a couple slides too, I think. Thank you, is that our, it's not the role of the budget committee to set staffing levels or manage programs. So oftentimes, you'll hear, you know, everyone who comes to serve typically has very specific things in mind that they care about and what the community rules schools, but that's not the role of the budget committee, it's more to understand what's happening from year to year within the district budget. And here the proposed budget message, have some discussion, and then approve it, so that they can move forward with adoption, where we will have resolutions that set appropriation levels and also our taxes. So that's probably the big thing I wanna share about the budget development process, and I know I have shared before, so. Sorry to be redundant there. Advance a slide please. So this is our current, our budget composition. You can see that our, we have looked at this in several different high slices, and tonight you can see the component that is other, and so we're gonna be looking at our debt service fund and our construction fund, and we're also gonna be talking about an internal service fund, which is something that has been activated in the past. So our first resource highlight is the debt service fund. For anyone who gets really excited about the accounting piece, we have, it's grouped under capital fund 300, and you can see that in the proposed budget document. That's the major fund. And it's separated out, because this is where we collect all of the taxes in order to pay the debt service. So the principal and interest on the bonds that we have sold, to get all this cash and do amazing projects, this is the fund where we track the collection and pay it back on that board, so. It's a sizable fund, we collect quite a bit, and we owe it all, and we pay that in a timely way every year. So you can see for our capital project funds, it's running at about 220 for 1,000 assessed value, and that's what we described as part of our bond payback structure under the last 2017 authorization that we passed. And you can see that our current outstanding principal for capital project funds, this is what we owe, is just under $120 million. Pension obligation bonds, those are a whole separate meeting in and of themselves, so I won't get too much into the details, hoping to keep it pretty high level here tonight, but I'm happy to talk about it for hours, for anyone who would like to reach out to me. We don't, we don't collect the tax to pay back our pension obligation bonds. We have two, and they're paid back on a different method. Each one, one's on a cash basis, and another one is on more of an intercept IOU basis, but the bottom line are, is that it comes from, we charge it as a percentage of our payroll, because it's tied to payroll expense. So for every dollar of payroll, we pay 1.73 cents towards our 2018 bonds, and then 6.22 cents on our 2005 ones, so. Super nerdy information, and I'm happy to dig into that with anyone who's more interested. Our outstanding principal as of last July is 96.65 million dollars.
Can I, can I ask a quick question?
Certainly.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I love nerdy stuff, so for the pension bonds, how many more years do we have on the debt service for that, the schedule?
2026.
Okay, so we're almost, we're almost done paying the bonds off?
Pension obligation bonds, yes.
Right, the pension, the pension bonds, so, okay, okay.
Yeah, we are on a debt service schedule that is coordinated with our estimated payroll roll.
Okay.
So it's something that we have to reassess every year as part of our budget process, and then we set that as a line item in our budget, so you will see that as an object in our budget.
Okay, so that, that's, that might be in future years, for example, if we felt like we had to do that again, and it was a good option, we would tackle that in a future budget. For example, right, okay.
So my follow-up, Christine's question is, I've never had the privilege of being on this end of the bond, which actually gets ended all the time. So if we're almost there, after we pay the principal, presumably make it to 2026, all payments are made, and we're in good shape, then what happens to the rest? Do we restructure that? I mean, I guess I'm trying to understand, because the principal amount is just part.
Right, so the pension obligation bonds, we sold to take a big amount of cash and send to PERS to continue to invest it under their system, and what that does is it keeps our PERS rates lower than what we would pay as a non-bonded school rate, be higher. And so at the end of this period, we're gonna be back to that school rate, and right now, we're both marginally below it, but significantly below it because of the earnings or investments from it.
So this is, so this is where the hamster wheels actually, we received the roll.
Yeah, we're up to that at all schools, yeah, that's how it's going.
And when you attend the OSBA conference in Bend in July, there probably will be a PERS 101 session, there usually is, and it's pretty, it's very nerdy and very good. And yeah, I remember them talking about how some districts chose to buy bonds and something.
Yeah, the market setting is a big determinant of whether or not that's a good idea. So it hasn't always been for all districts, but we've been very fortunate so far. I'm happy to share the hard history.
It's, I'm just admitting that it's fascinating to be on this slide, where you actually you're just close to paying it off, off, and then on the beginning of it, where you get the push, everybody gets involved, and then you forget about it, right? Because nobody wants to do the already settled, understand what happens if they can, quite for sure, so.
I never forget about it, PERS is such a major cost driver, I, I just have followed it very closely over this period. Again, we're the other whole separate session on its own, happy to leave that happen.
We'll have our own thing.
Okay, moving ahead. This is super, I don't know, super simple bar chart, but what I wanted to show you for what we, kind of the breakdown of $10 for us, so it didn't quite come through the same on that slide, the data online, so I can tell you that for $10, if $7.86 is wages, we send another $2.14 to our pension obligation, so I just wanted to, you know, share that if we look at it in terms of a bar, what pension can be almost a hidden cost, because it doesn't seem to be paid to our employees, yet it is a very big cost of having fully employees in the system, so. I always like to bring that forward as we're talking about budget, because there's no black hole, it's always coming forward, it just doesn't seem to be paid out to anybody. So that information, all right, so let's go ahead and move forward. So our capital projects fund, again, super high level, I did ask Adam just to, you know, in case he wanted to add some more information, but he knows that because he shares regularly with the bond oversight committee, and then they come and share information here, we didn't need to dive too deeply into that. But the capital projects fund, the major fund, I just wanted to share with you guys kind of where we are with that. We of course had our 2017 bond authorization at 408 million dollars, and we sold that in two series, one was immediate, like the next day. As soon as we had authorization, we went to market, because it happened to be a very good time to do that. So we sold over 268 million dollars in bonds, and we earned 51.6 million dollars in premium. So the premium are funds that have to be spent towards the projects we were authorized to spend for. That's all part of the rules around these kinds of dollars and those kinds of bonds. But we don't have to pay that back, that was, we were oversubscribed, people were super hot in the market at that time. So we still owe, as of last July, just under 268 million dollars. When we went out again, we sold in 2020, the remaining portion of our authorization, so that was just under 149 million dollars. Again, super great time to hit the market rates with 27.7 million dollars in premium, so that's really helped us stay keep pace with the cost escalation that we've experienced since the onset of our planning for the bond. And our total outstanding principal today is 138.5 million dollars. And that's principal only, that's not interest included, but we got to get ready. So there's a link in this slide to the bond oversight committee, and that just goes to the page, where you can drill down into every date, we've hit every picture we've taken, every project we completed, and I think in case you can't, or probably we have touched every single set in the district, and. All right, so the bond fund that we have here to talk about is our internal service fund, and it is still in our budget document, the 2018 was the final year of our PERS year, and then we used that to avert a budget shortfall, we're experiencing that loss, and it's part of how we bridge that gap. As by the board, prior to that, to establish the fund, they learned that we had a one-time fund available, and an opportunity to set that aside, knowing that costs were gonna increase downward specifically for PERS. But the internal service fund may be used for any long-term plan. Basically, that's a set aside that is revisited every budget cycle as one-time funds that may be used for X. And here are some samples of things that districts have used in the past. Service stabilization, so even the state of Oregon has a service stabilization fund to support schools during our economic summals. We have, some districts have set them aside as technology replacement. Curriculum adoption, so we have a multi-year curriculum adoption and purchase plan. That takes a lot of support, so that might be something to consider in the future. PERS reserve, of course, and then as we move into the strategic planning process, that might be something else that gets cleaned up over a period of several years, so. Just wanted to highlight that fund, we haven't had an opportunity to use it a lot in the past, but I didn't want you guys to be informed as to what I'm going to use for. And then it's up for any review by the budget committee for appropriation purposes. That is the last slide on our budget talk for tonight, I'm happy to answer questions you might have.
Any questions for Michelle of the committee?
Just a comment, this is, I deeply appreciate the depth and breadth that you bring to this body for us to, for us to understand the financing and the structure behind it, it's so critical, and the fact that we have an active committee that oversees that is so important, so. It's not enough just to say thank you, but I have to start there, because right now that's how I want to offer, so, I mean, sincerely, thank you.
Thank you for sticking with the process, and it's been a lot of information to look at this year. We're typically in a reduction mode, and so this has got a really positive vibe, to just be able to share information with the budget committee and the board at large, so I've been very encouraged in that. One, also another side note, we still have a vacancy on our budget committee, so if you have anyone that's interested, we've extended the application period to Monday night, and it's too late to probably fully catch them up for this budget cycle, but we'd love to have that person in place as a group member here. And apart of that, so, please encourage them. Thank you.
Thank you. See anybody here, so we'll just keep going, right?
Okay. I thought budget was going 6:06, so if you wanna do the student rep one?
Next up is board vacancy, so we'll do that. All right, so next topic is the board vacancy discussion. As you all know, Director Martinez has submitted her resignation, so tonight, in your packet on page five, is sort of a timeline on a timeline on how we will manage, or a potential timeline on how to manage the appointment. You can see the application process starts tomorrow. So I, one of the things we will do, it's not uncommon, but it is a little bit rare for us to take action during a board session, it was on the agenda, it was published, and so we will be looking to take action on this issue tonight, so that we can begin the process of appointing or placement for Director Martinez. Somebody have any questions at the outset here? Feel like you're, oh, Seth?
I see that there's a little bit on here about news release tech media, but how else are we planning double sides?
If we do it all the normal ways on the district website, hot news, all the social media. Like they already, we may already have a few applications already.
Not yet, because I haven't opened, but we have a lot of.
People, okay, all right, excellent. So that'll be, are we deciding tonight? How many in the interview, or is that?
Wait, see how many we get.
See how many we get, okay.
We're just approving the process.
All right, so the process is very similar to the last couple of times at least, that we've had to fulfill board vacancies, so not a lot of deviation from the way we've done it in the past. Open a suggestion, if you think there's a better way, but it has worked out for us so far. So the applications will be accepted, we'll all have them, we'll individually sort of read through them ourselves, and then I think two times in a row, we just use the same questions, maybe?
I would say so.
Yeah, so in order to, so a couple of decisions we will have to make at some point, once we have all the applications, is how many applicants we want to interview the night we will make the appointment, and the questions that we want to ask them, and the one that I was involved with, there were five questions, I think five board members, and we all asked the same question. It's a public, it's a work session, I think, but it's a, it's a public session, so that the applicants can choose to sit in, when somebody else is being interviewed, normally they don't, but they can, so it's a public session. So, so the decisions we'll have to make is, you know, how many people of the, how many applicants we're going to interview, and which ones, that one side with ones, and then we'll figure out what the questions are. Looks like that happens, finalize interview questions, the work session in May.
That is, yeah, May 10.
Interview questions, but the finalized interview questions is until May, all right? And so we're gonna select on the one session in June, all right? Right?
Just, Mark, just for a point of clarification, are we allowing, are we advertising for face-to-face, and are we, or are we allowing either to choose?
Yeah, I think we'll be able to manage that when we get closer, but yeah, I'm fine with if somebody's coming in, coming in. What we have done in the past is gathering all the applications, figure out how many we want to interview, I feel like last time we chose to interview five, and then one person dropped out between the time we chose them, and so we only had the ability to interview four on the night, and we asked them the questions, and so I feel like you need to have the interview process, so I'm comfortable with that happening virtually if they want. You seem to be doing a pretty good job incorporating hybrid world with your life world. Any other questions about the process? All right, would anybody care to make a motion?
I would that the board of directors accept Director Martinez's resignation from position seven on the board of directors, announce the vacancy of board position seven, and approve the appointment process and timeline.
Second?
It's been moved by Director Ward and seconded by Director Allen that the board of directors accept Director Martinez's resignation from position seven on the board of directors, announce the vacancy of board position seven, and approve the appointment process and timeline. Call the rule.
Lisa, Ellen?
Aye.
She and Kim? Okay, Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Viviana Martinez?
Aye.
Nick Ward, Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Oh.
She and Kim?
Aye.
Motion carries, all right. So anybody watching at home, applications will start to be received tomorrow. And if you have an agenda in front of you, we're gonna skip ahead a little bit and then go back. As you guys may remember, that we've been engaging a consultant for our strategic planning work. Beth, you wanna do an introduction, Seth?
Sure, this is Lauren Klattke, and she is joining us from California, she is with performance fact, who is the consultant that we hired to lead our strategic planning work. We had the pleasure of meeting with Lauren yesterday, our cabinet team, and then this morning, she joined our pre-K-12 cabinet meeting, and spent four to five minutes kind of getting an overview of the process, and sharing information, and was very well-received by our administrative team, so we're very excited to have her start her work with the board, and without further ado, take it away, Lauren.
Okay, great.
And we've got a helper here that's only to write your presentation, so you can just let her know when to.
I'm gonna hand out some paper products. Yeah, this is gonna, I'm really thinking, sorry, I don't have paper products for online, but it's the same, you're welcome, presentation. Thank you, already have yours, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, all covered, yes, great. Okay, so that's great. It's my sincere pleasure to be here. I'm looking forward to sharing with you an introduction to the strategic planning process, to share a little bit about performance fact, I'm sitting, I've been sitting for a while, so. Share a little bit about performance fact, about myself, and then have an opportunity to answer some questions, and depending on how much time we have, we'll dig into some of the pieces, you'll get to experience some of the pieces that we'll be doing as part of the process. So this is our team, small but mighty, we have five folks who are a part of our company. Woo-Tu Abai is the founder and CEO of the company, and we've been operating since the mid 90s, when he started with his first contract for a strategic plan with the state of California. And so he put us working on that strategic plan. I joined the team a few years ago, but I've known Woo-Tu for much longer, because he actually came in to help me as a as a beginning charitable to getting my school community in alignment and do our actual site-based strategic plan for my high school that I was training. We have several other people who help us out behind the scenes, but Woo-Tu and I do the primary client-facing work. And go ahead and, boy, one. They put the animations in this, I said this earlier, not only is the animation choosing my slides, except I forgot they're there, I get confused, and it's even more awkward when somebody else is showing your slides, but. So we take our role really seriously, our role as a facilitator. And what we see, and how we think about, actually, facilitator in French, facile to make easy. All right, so as a facilitator, we're not here to command or control. We could do it if we tried, when you're working with adults, but we do have a point of view, and we do direct the learning process and direct the strategic planning process in a way based on that point of view. But we ultimately leave it up to our communities to figure out what they, what steps they wanna take, and how they wanna follow that process. Go to the next slide. The key thing about bringing in a consultant to support the work, and what we think our value add is, is that we have our external perspective, of having done hundreds of strategic plans with districts across the country, and we get to, we're gonna aligning our external perspective with your internal vision, for your students, for schools, your community. And we're excited, and I have really been excited so far by the opportunity to already engage with people for our community, in that side. So first, we start by just sharing a little bit about how we look at when we're coming into our community, how do we get a profile of our students, just to kind of understand who's at the table and who's in the school community. And so one of the ways that we present our data is to think of a classroom of 20 students. California, it sounds very old, but we have a classroom of 20 students, but we think of the number of 20 students, and in one classroom, how many students are representing different backgrounds or identities? And so this is for Hillsboro, right, if you think about a classroom of 20 students, you have one student who, I've done websites, but with an Asian background, eight students who are Hispanic or Latinx, one student, and about 20 who's from a race, there's nine white students, and then all of the additional races and ethnicities together combined, it'd be like another one student. You know this from real lived experience, it just helps us to get a sense of what is the diversity in the land and makeup of the community. Next slide, please. Thanks. The other profile of our students that we look at is, out of every 20 students, how many students are, participate in different federal programs, basically. So out of 20 students, three students are students who have IEPs, are learning differences, you have seven students who are learning English as a second language, and you have 12 under 20 students who qualify for free, who standard qualify for free or for these ones based on the federal income guidelines. So a little bit about us, why we do this work. Our mission and what we focus on is, we wanna develop capable leaders, strengthen effective practices in order to achieve extraordinary results for students. That's bottom line when we're in the work. Our main performance fact comes from our core values, which are about, first, being fast-forward, how do we accelerate learning? For young people that haven't yet experienced the success that we know they're capable of, it's about accountability, how are we holding ourselves as the adults accountable to achieving those results? It's about continuous learning, and probably the most important part is about trust. And so when we come to work with the community, And so when we come to work with the community, um, we know that we're being entrusted to support your, um, young people and your processes and we think that very seriously. Next slide. I'm, a bit about our stance. I said, we do have a perspective that we share and we like to share upfront, um, with, um, everybody we work with. Because it's not only about who we are, uh, but it's also about how we guide the strategic planning process. And so this is something we refer to as a performance prep, prep, back premise that we did a lot of talking today. The, the first part of it is states that all students will learn at high levels when instruction meets their needs. And what the student has not learned well yet is something that she, you're here, they have not been taught well yet. Okay. And so student learning then is like, is in effect, right? It's an outcome. And the cause lies in the quality and the effectiveness of the educational practices. And those educational practices are not just what's happening in the classroom between a teacher, student, content. But it's also the leadership practices and the organizational practices, right? Even at a district level, um, that are essential. And so if we want to have continuous improvement of our outcomes for the young people who are entrusted to, to care for and support and nurture their growth and development, we have to be continuously improving the adult practices. Um, we have to continue to grow. And that's how we, we make a difference, right? That's how we can improve. So that's the, the first premise of our work. Uh, the second slide that we'll share, just the next slide, is around how we do strategic planning and how we get there. Um, and we, we suggest that the primary aim of strategic planning is not to have a pretty poster or to fill a checkbox for a safe requirement, but the primary aim is around alignment. And so what we want to be doing, the supporting communities, uh, for moving from the circle on the left, which represents misalignment to the circle on the right, which represents alignment. Now, alignment or misalignment happens all the time. Right? I just flew on a plane and my back is misaligned, okay? It's very, it's very easy to get our physically misaligned. Well, what do we do, right? We can stretch it to a chiropractor, we can do things to come into alignment. I'm still functioning, I'm still walking, but I might not be functioning optimally. Right? Similarly with cars, you can drive a car that's not aligned for a long time. Um, and it will still, you can still get from point A to point B, but you're not functioning optimally. So, and this alignment happens all the time because there are things that come into our system that change your shift. And it's the process of coming into alignment that we engage in through planning. And so by moving from the circle on the left to the circle on the right, we can move with more, um, speed towards our shared goals. Um, and make sure that our people, the programs or processes are all on the same page. You'll notice that the arrows retain their shape and their color and their width and different things because they all represent unique perspectives. And, and we're not asking them to come into one mass arrow or, or leave behind unique perspectives, but that we all can orient towards, um, a shared purpose or goal. Next slide. Okay, so how do we, um, the first core piece of what we do together is focus on how we embrace the multiple voices in the school community. We always begin with students. Uh, we center our student voice, uh, in our processes, um, because they are the, that's the whole reason for me. Um, and they, they will let us know what's working and what isn't working. So we began with a student survey, um, something that will be new for the Hillsboro School District is that we'll be doing a survey of students all the way down to, into grades three through six to gather perceptions of elementary school students in addition to the middle and high school survey that we'll do. Um, we also will be doing focus groups that goes down to focus groups with third through sixth grade in addition to focus groups of middle and high. And those are always really fun, um, to facilitate. But part of that is to make sure we're looking at what is the educational experience of the young people in our system all the way through. In time, all the way through. Uh, and that's something that we're gonna start this spring. And so we gathering that. We will also be through our teams ensuring that all of the constituents up here, um, are part of the process. Um, the most, uh, important step and one of the reasons why you want to immediately engage all of these groups of folks in the process itself is if you want folks to be on the other side helping to implement and to be committed to the plan, they need to have an authentic way of be contributing to and having their voice heard, um, during the process. And so, um, that's essential core feature of how we move our work forward. Next slide. Thanks. So we do this by having teams. Um, we found that a team structure, um, has been the most beneficial for a number of reasons. Just like when you think about a team as a group of people who come together repeatedly, who develop relationship with one another and kind of share a story of understanding of the work. And so we, we start with a core planning team. And that's CP in the middle, our level diagram. Um, so the core planning team is the most diverse team. Um, it needs to represent all of the stakeholders so that we have a student and a parent and a teacher and an administrator and a community member all around the team all talking with one another and, and coming to alignment around what is our vision, our goals, et cetera. And the core planning team is the one that also invests the most time, um, and energy, including two full days of, um, really digging in to take the process off and then multiple sessions, um, throughout the process, um, to, of the plan development. This team, there's not, we don't, we never limit the size. We're about to go to Princeton Public Schools on Tuesday and they have 220 people or 215 people on their core planning team. Yeah, because everybody want to be involved. And so, you know, you want to be involved. It's of the encouraging not to say, say no, um, to, uh, folks if they want to be part of the process. So, but it's ultimately up to the districts to decide, I don't know, the real to decide, um, you know, there's a size that you want. Uh, but we've also had core planning teams down to, you know, 50, 50 participants. Um, but for a district of your size, we would imagine that this will be fairly large. Um, the other two required teams are in orange. Uh, well, first is student voice, which I mentioned, we don't have an actual set of student voice team that I'll meet with, uh, multiple times the fall, uh, where they will really be serving as like a reality check on the work of the work planning team. So, oh, so people came up with, is this really aligned with, um, what you would like to see? Uh, and then the other team that's required is the instructional focus team. And that team is really comprised of just the practitioners, um, who are part of the process. These are teachers, instructional aides, um, district instructional folks who are really going to be holding the core of some of the teaching and learning elements. Um, and we found that it's most effective in having that team, um, sort of take on that work. And then the third required component is a community forum. And those community forums are open. Um, sometimes they're run by, um, school areas or they're run by, um, board member districts in terms of having parents and community members being able to contribute to the process uh, of the strategic plan during the process, not at the end, but during the process. So that we can share some of the work, we have community forums, it's like a reality check. And then we can come and integrate, um, the feedback that's happening. Next slide. And then we're gonna take questions.
For what's worth, we don't have board member districts. We're not geographically.
Yeah, we can, so we can figure it out. Like, I mean, you've done it just open multiple nights or done it for middle, um, senior high, different ways. Um, and then sometimes we've also use, I know that there are already some pre-existing groups, um, like parent groups and different, um, community groups that are meeting that we can push into those spaces um, to, to utilize that because it's, it's hard, you know, to, to give those multiple checkpoints. Um, that's why this last slide, now I'm just gonna ask, but if any other questions, do you want to type in that word?
Well, my, my point is that you take, uh, great pride and value in our student board members.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I wanted to say publicly that I wish them to be fully engaged on that student board team.
Yeah.
Um, and that not the headliners, but they should be there. We should, this other student should see them that we need this process.
Although, Sid, now we jump on the reality tip team, all three of us are senior school graduates.
No, I'm in there too.
That's true. Okay. I was gonna be like, I'm not here. So, well, God. Good. Just for the next group, they should be involved.
Although I will say something too to think about on the core planning team, having former, um, board members and their available or graduates. Um, or is also a, a, a constituent that can be helpful to bring in the next, but that's very, for sure. Yeah. So, there are additional teams. Um, so I just want to let you know and you board review team as a team. Um, so throughout the process, uh, we will be coming back to the board and sharing the work as we go along. Usually we do it at cadence of once a month or once every, you know, six week updates of where the work is progressing. In addition to having some board members participate on the core planning team. Obviously we need to avoid the forum, but that's, you know, we, we always are hoping to have a few board members on the core planning team. Um, and that's so that ultimately the plan's going to come back to the board. And the board will have, you know, kind of this final review and approval and questions. And so we, we, we want to have checkpoints and hear thoughts along the way, but we do ask board members to hold kind of their final, um, judgment of the, of the, the plan until we get to the formal board review at the end. Um, there are other meetings that we'll have and I'll be sharing a, a write-up of the different, um, groups that's going to be shared out when the signups are happening, uh, for those teams. Um, so I'm gonna pause there for a moment and see if there are any additional questions or comments before we, this was kind of the technical, some of the technical aspects of the process. So I just wanted to pause there for a moment.
Just to heads up, we also have board members online, three board members are online as well, so.
Can you see me on the owl? No, I was on the owl today for another school board. They kept showing me the podium and not the people, so. Yeah, so questions either from the room or online.
You mentioned some of this work starts this spring, focus groups start this spring. Feels like it's April. What do you mean by this spring?
Well, just snow. I mean, it's not a good story yet, right? Yeah, so we're gonna start, um, we're gonna hold in May is when we're planning on holding the focus groups. The surveys are going to go out, um, at the end of this month, beginning of May as well. Um, but we'll also have two more, two more sessions with students once we come back. So the focus group is really gathering, um, information and input on student experience, right? Now that will be fed into the data public that the core planning team is using. And then our student voice team where we're gonna have, which will be more of the middle and high school students, um, who we take through similar processes. Um, that, that will reach both in September, I think we have them again in October. There might be one more out of that.
Basically one chance to participate in this survey, which is coming up soon.
Yes. So I guess I'm concerned about this survey.
Great methods to get great data only in so long as everyone that is interested, is there anything that the district can do to assist to make sure you get a robust response for participants?
Yes.
Oh, try and stop it.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, we've talked to our principals about using the morning meeting and the advisory periods that every student would have access to and then carve out times that every elementary schooler, I don't know if that three through six would have a morning meeting opportunity and then the advisory periods where you get the.
Yeah.
Also, we're finding like setting aside part of their instructional day to fill out a survey.
Correct. Maybe during school time, it could be something that you would be able to ask, we'd be able to inform students about why they're doing it. I think a problem giving a survey in today's day and age is why am I doing this?
Yeah.
When am I investing it? So I would help students feel.
Yeah, if you're supposed to do it at home, chances aren't great.
Yeah, we get low returns.
We found that it really is the best practice to have a set aside block of time, um, in a classroom setting. Uh, where, um, especially also with the early elementary where the questions are read aloud. Um, and it's done in sequence, um, to support our emergent readers.
Okay, I'm going to ask you about this a little bit because, uh, I'm the student voice person who tells the student voice. Uh, so, do you know, are you planning to have a survey, no longer typically you're controlling, do you know that here?
Yeah, so we typically, our surveys are digital. Um, if there are, um, concerns for accessibility of the digital platform, um, we can definitely work with any, you know, teacher classroom to provide a paper copy and or, um, renewed surveys and report responses in different classroom settings. Sometimes that's what we can work with. But it's, it's digital. Part of that is so you can track on a real-time basis. Um, you said, okay, well, this, you know, sometimes we work with the district and they'll say, well, we, we're, the survey went out today and they did it in the first period and then they'll say, well, no, we have 20 kids in your district who're taking a survey. So, let's, let's circle back and, and make sure we get it.
Okay, uh, second part of this, it travels a little bit, but are we planning on explaining like a little bit behind why the faculty that are setting up surveys? Cause I know the rise in whenever we have these surveys for other things in class that it can be received, there is high school environment, a lot of eye rolling. Um, so we interested to hear your strategies for, you know, where that kind of, I think luckily that's the way we create.
I have lots of ideas. Um, what I can, what I will say is that typically it's amplified by the district. Um, and we rely on what, you know, the local, uh, knowledge and understanding of the culture is and the news. Um, but having a clear, having the investment of the teacher who's facilitating it, who can answer questions and kind of help encourage and having a clear, even if it's like a third second video, it's kind of a video, like just targeting the test. This is what this is, this stuff can be used. Um, can be really beneficial, but I would really recur to this and we're happy to support. It's the, it's probably one of the most important, um, pieces of data that we use in the process. Hands down is what folks want to be digging into. So it's really important to us to get a, not from return.
I see Michelle online on this question. Michelle, you want to ask your question? Thanks for raising your hand.
Yeah. Hi. Um, so for like the survey, um, is it, are the results gonna be like published publicly? I will, I had a few questions, but, uh, the first one was like, are the results of the survey gonna be like published publicly? Or like have, uh, because I think that for students, a lot of times, like with the whole eye rolls for like surveys and stuff like that, it's because they feel like they're not, the surveys like don't go anywhere or they don't see the results of the survey or they feel like there's no outcome from it. But I think like maybe like having afterwards, like having some statement after like analyzing the results of the survey, publishing at least like that and like analysis of the results of the survey and like comments of it about it and like ways that students can like notice how their feedback is, is actually being used. Sorry, my computer's.
That's great. Um, so typically the survey, uh, data is, and all of the data that we gather is, is put up. We encourage either, we sometimes build like a, a special strategic planning site so that people from the community can take a look at the results, um, or to then sort of see, track, track the process. Um, but we do encourage that, you know, all of the results are shared publicly as well as the meeting making that happens. Um, and as we'll talk in a minute about data and what data is and isn't, and survey data, what it is and isn't. Um, the other thing I will say is that the student voice team will look at the survey results. Like so, both the core planning team, instructional books, like everybody, every team we have is going to be reviewing that those survey results, um, in addition to the other data to make the meaning, um, of that data. But I think that's a great point to think about what the official policy is.
Perfect. Sounds good. And then, um, also to add on to that, I think that like, um, just as a teenager in high school or I think a lot of, of my peers don't really, and sometimes like myself, don't have like a clear understanding of what like strategic planning is. So I think that maybe like having, um, a way to kind of like explain that to them and the importance of it. Um, and then also, um, another one of my questions that I had is like, is the survey gonna be translated, um, in any way?
Yes, the survey will be translated, um, into the necessary languages for the student body. Um, and so we have our surveys already translated in Spanish. Um, but we work with the, the district to identify additional languages, um, that the survey would be translated in. So that students have access to it.
Perfect. Um, and then I kind of like a few more questions. So for, uh, the students that are on the student voice team, how are they chosen and how, how is this team advertised? And how, how do we set it apart from like, say, like the student reps on the school board?
That's great. Um, so. That's great. So we do not, we as consultants do not select, you know, who's on the team. We provide guidelines and our guidelines are that the student, the student group should not be the leadership classes. Sort of where the student body rolled out. You, you want to have a diverse representation of students. And, and that diversity really needs to include student engagement, student, you know, investment. Students' experiences of schooling over the course of their time. As well as, you know, representation of student, ethnic groups, racial orientations, LGBTQ, you know, just wanting to have that range. And one thing that we have talked about, or the district has talked about and proposed is to do. You know, which I think is going to be, is going to be new for us, and I think this is a great approach, is to hold a few affinity space, base spaces and groups. As well as our more, just kind of, which will be, those should be the focus groups versus the core planning, the student voice team. Which I think is one of the things you want to avoid is that we're also kind of tokenizing, you know, particular voices in a, in a community forum. So, so we, it's, it's, it's up to the district to provide the sort of, bring students together. So I think that sharing your ideas would be, I'm sure welcome.
Hey, perfect. Thank you.
That was great. Obviously. I think that I wrote the next slide. I'm not really sure what the, well, we did that one. One more. Okay, this is the old one. Okay, you don't have all these slides in your deck. I just wanted to share, this is just the calendar of engagement thus far. Through, I know it's so small, we try to get it on one page, which means somebody could read anything, so. But the, the big idea here is that you'll see the central leadership team is that CLT, that's meeting with the cabinet. So I, that's where we started. I started yesterday morning was meeting with the cabinet. PT is the principal, so the PK twelve admin team, I was explaining the process to them. BD and Luke, that's you guys. And so we're just, we're kind of engaging our conversation here. There will be future board updates scheduled, but you'll see that, you know, the first, the next board update is not until after the core planning team has met. And then we've kind of gotten things off the ground to bring back the work on products. But there will also be a board update on our line file, file of calendar, but there'll be one in October. And then there's also a November calendar goes on, but just to kind of give you a cadence of like how the teams flow. And we can share the finalized calendar results. So, but we're going to kick off with multiple day, full day engagements in August, August sixteenth, seventeenth. As the core planning team, and then instructional focus team is going to be on the eighteenth.
Core, core planning team meeting in the middle of summer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, as I said, is that middle of summer? The core planning team, I think it's, we want to balance getting, getting the staff. Before they start the school year, I think was the kind of thinking behind it, but why don't you, maybe you can speak to it?
Well, the thought was, we've either got late June or we've got August. And just with all of the summer programming that we have going on this year and just our ability to get survey data done and get things compiled and ready to go. And really, be really hit the ground running. We felt like August is already a time when everybody's mindset is around planning for the year. And we felt like we would have a better opportunity to get people to dedicate full days. Because that also includes community members as well and, and parents and, and other folks. So, yeah, we're feeling pretty good about the August dates and that puts us, that gives us enough time to meet our timeline of wanting to get this adopted by the board next March, so.
So.
Are we asking staff to come in on those days?
Yeah, if anybody's not on their contract, go get me.
Okay. And it'll be a coalition of the way, like, we want people to be, you want to be a. We've, someone we've noticed just in the last couple of years is that people are making big trade-offs if you ask them to do something for days at a time during this school year.
Yeah.
Both professionally and the family.
Especially subs, people reluctant to say, take me out of rotation, right?
Yeah, several will work, you know, and. It's just trying to take a deep breath and intellectually and like emotionally get into a project like this unless we carve out some time when people are not stressed. So a little bit of people who want to be in a leadership role and support role, join us with a bunch of times.
A little bit self-selecting also, I mean.
I think recruited for diversity from a perspective and then consenting to join our team.
I'm, I'm going to develop a Google form, because I kind of pitched this to the admin team today. That is a way for us to start gathering ideas from people who themselves want to be involved at some level. Who have ideas about staff members, who have license and classified, who have ideas about parents, who might be interested, students who might be interested. And have that be kind of our first task before we start then kind of opening the doors to people to self-select. Or, you know, sharing their interest in these certain things. So I think we're going to come at it from a couple of different directions to try to get the best group of people who really are interested in. Being participants solidly through this whole process, because it's super important to get people who are really committed to all the meetings. Just having people to come once and then they miss the next meeting. I mean, it's just, you need that consistency, so.
I just want to make it public that we, be intentional about making sure that our licensed and unlicensed staff. Is fully represented where appropriate. I think that's another part of us trying to make sure that everybody not has a voice, it's more than just having a voice. It, it goes back to that appreciate thing that has been the mantra throughout the, the negotiation. And that I think this is a, a good point for us to be able to say, we, we really do want your voice at this point, so let's, let's give that, so.
Yeah, we're also, right, we're asking for those two days and then committing to all the days in the future. We already saw on another slide, we have sixty percent free and reduced lunch, so those parents might be working two jobs and may not be at time since I do it.
I, I think that that needs to be considered as well.
Yeah, so one of the things that we've done, you know, part of this working with each individual community to determine what are other methods for getting. You know, specific focused engagement and feedback in the way that works. So we, when we're working with Washington Unified in West Sacramento, they actually had a, us. One community forum that was for classified staff. You know, it was a dedicated time and it was at a particular time in the day that they'd set for what their work schedules were. It was on Zoom, they don't, you know, but you could just kind of, we're able to kind of make sure that, you know, maybe you're, you're not able to participate in the whole process. But we want to make sure your particular points of view are in what we're in. And that information is brought to the core planning team. Similarly, when holding the community forums or parent events. You may choose to have those be more focused around on different affinity spaces or identity groups. And just kind of really using those as particular data inputs. As well as getting feedback on whatever work's been done to date. So I think it's, it's just incumbent on us to sort of see what the product, like if you're not seeing that there's representation. And that comes into the team, so we need to pivot and make sure.
So then Travis, hopefully that we're having this mind meld that we're thinking about engaging the parent action groups. So that they can be involved and there's your particular.
I think we do a decent job. We haven't talked to Lauren about this in depth. Like our parent advisory committees and then the different ways we've been focusing groups during our presentation, student investment account work. Like we kind of have it in our flow to be able to get groups together, get those focus groups and then diverse groups together, share across the identity circles. So I think we're in a good spot to compensate people for their time.
I, I'm going to be honest with you. I didn't expect it. I, I had very low expectations of what you were going to do. I think it all that, I don't know.
Well, thank you. I'll take that. Let us. We're going to, we're going to, we're just hard to live up to your expectations.
But I really, I really liked where this is laying out, and I think that's what I was struggling with when we first talked about this. When one of us like really are bringing them in and how is this going to happen and I'm sure you can't do this ourselves, so. Thank you for making the change.
Thank you for sharing your perspective, for, for, we are aiming to eat expectations and expect expectations. One thing I will say about having an external facilitator. So when, you know, Mike Scott is participating as part of the core planning team, he's participating as Mike Scott, not as superintendent. Everybody, you know, is at, on the same conversation, board members are participating, you're not participating as a board member. You're just participating as a community member or parent or whatever other roles you're playing. So it's just really important that we can hold that space to create the conditions for constructive, you know, debate and conclusion.
And so one of the things I'd say is that we, we have done this process ourselves before. And we've done various iterations of that. We had Beth run it one, one time, we did a kind of a re-adoption, one time or renewal, I think we called it. We've done kind of a fifty fifty model with a facilitator. And one of the reasons that we felt like it was important to get a third party and to get someone that was highly recommended. Was that it's been a number of years since we've done a full process. And it's pretty clear that a lot can change in a two-year period. And so we have, we've committed to this and we wanted to do it in a thorough manner that would allow us to chart a course for the next four or five years. In a way where we had our eye on where we wanted to land, but we had some flexibility on how we got there. Because we know that circumstances will change from year to year. So that's why we're excited to work with Lauren and her team, because they, they are obviously very comprehensive in the work that they do. And the number of people that will be involved in this in our community by the time we're done is, it'll just be a significant number. So understand your skepticism and, and we've had some experiences in the past that, that we could, we could go that direction too. But we feel like this is the right partner for us at the right time.
I understand.
Let's, let's go to the next slide. I wanted to now share a little bit about like what, the question was like, what is strategic planning even look like? All right, so this is how we talk about our process. I'm going to hold it there for a sec, I'm actually going to use the, the light. So this is our, this is the process we use. And we start, we always begin with data. And data is just, it's information, right, that we use to, to understand the current state. And, and then, and you go to the next one, sorry, thank you. And, you know, that first step, you know, it's, we ask the question, what data do we have? Like what do we actually have to look at? And there are some ways where we might realize we need more data or different data or more focus groups or more information. But that's sort of what we start with. Then we turn to the next phase, which is analysis and discovery. Which is as important, in my opinion, in some ways potentially more important than just the data collection and looking at the data. We have to answer the first question together as a team, what does this data say? Because two people can look at the same set of information or data and think it says very different things, right? And so the first step in the, the alignment process with your strategic planning is to come together to have a shared understanding of what the data is telling us. About how, how we're doing as a district and where we need to put our attention. And then, once we have a shared agreement about what we're actually seeing, then we, then we start to do our discovery process, which is, you know, why does it look this way? Right? We start to unpack some root causes and to make some meaning of the data. Because it's only if we have a shared meeting making of what it means and why it is that way that we can actually come to a shared understanding around what we're going to do about it. And so that's where we call the solution, which is basically the plan. And that's where we lay out, what are we going to do about it? So we look at student data from multiple sources. We look at areas of strength and areas of concern. And I will say that we do look at areas of strength, because you can learn just as much from what is working well as you can from things that are not working yet. And then we do the root clauses. And then in terms of our solution, we, we suggest, I believe, the process in such a way that organizes a strategic plan around two key areas. Student learning, instructional effectiveness and infrastructure. When we talk about an equity-centered strategic planning process, we talk about keeping ends and means and proper sequence. So what are the ends that we are seeking? And then what are our means together? Okay, sometimes you will see a strategic plan that will have things like facilities, goals or financial goals in the strategic plan. We suggest that that is, that's maybe fixing up ends and means. Quality facilities are important, but they're not the ends we're seeking. The ends we're seeking are what we call circle number one, which is student learning, right? Student learning, that's, we put that at the core. So all of our goals are in the plan and be articulated around student learning outcomes. The next part that we suggest you elevate above all other parts of the system is instructional effectiveness. We suggest that the most critical piece in a school system is the quality of the instruction. So that all of the young people are learning and growing and excelling. And that instruction includes social emotional learning and includes, you know, pre-K, how to tie your shoes. And it's, it includes all those things, but it's all about what's happening between the student and the teachers and the leadership systems to have a focus on their growth and development. Once that's set, then we move to circle number three, which is what is the infrastructure? So what are, what are the things that we need in terms of facilities? What are the things that we need in terms of human resources? What are the things we need in terms of finances to make sure we can have the effective instruction and student learning outcomes we want? So in the plan themselves, we can go, I think you can go all three, just one, two, three, perfect, thank you. In the first part of student learning, there are several things that we will define, or a community will define, I should say, as part of student learning. One is to have a set of equity principles that will guide kind of the district. Now, this is, every district chooses to do this, some already have it in place. My understanding is that this is something that may be of interest. And every, every district works on a portrait of a graduate. And a portrait of a graduate is this, our vision document of like, what are, what is our, what, what do we want? The qualities, the attributes, characteristics to be clear and developed in all of the graduates. And all the students who move through our system, K through twelve. I revisit mission and vision, sometimes folks will do shared beliefs or shared values as part of that. And you will have goals and measures about student outcomes. And for each goal and measure, there will be an identification of any equity gaps that are present and how those gaps will be tended to. And then the last part, which is actually after most of the plan is done and once it's been approved, then you set your performance targets, your benchmarks. So it's after you've said, yes, this is where we're going, this is what we're measuring, then once we know that, we know when each year we have your performance targets. Instructional effectiveness is the next part of the next phase. And the instructional leadership team does take a pretty significant leadership role in working on this. However, the core planning team sets the basis in terms of the four pillars. Like what are the foundation of the plan? And then also around educational strategies. So every community member, students get an opportunity to say, what strategies do you think that we should employ that would help us achieve our goals? And then the last part is the infrastructure supports, resource allocation, you know, leadership for results and then implementation. So that's the structure of the plan. Any questions or? Okay, we'll go on to the next slide. Okay, so we're going to, without further ado, I heard this was a, you know, a study session, right? Like a board, board study session a little bit now or something, yeah. We're going to do a little bit, we're going to experience a little bit of the strategic planning, like, process. Over the next, I have about thirty minutes remaining before I have to get to money, playing back to, back to California. So I wanted us to start, we're going to do a little bit with some data, talk about it, and then we're going to do a little bit with a portrait of a graduate. Just to have some conversation, because it also helps me to hear from you all, kind of what you're, what you're thinking, right? And so first thing, student data. So data just shows us symptoms, right? They're just, they're the outcomes of the support, like what are the results we're getting, what are their practices? And really, what, what leads to change is actually the analysis and getting to the underlying causes. So we don't want to spend too much time being too kind of in-depth with the data. But I do want to share kind of how we frame our data work and what you can expect. in depth with the data, but I do want to share kind of how we bring our data work and what you can expect. So one of the foundational documents that we we came across very recently in our work and part of it, I think, is because who to, our CEO is a science of engineer by training. So we saw this, there's a report that came out called Monitoring Educational Equity. And it was written by the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine. And that made us have this question of like, what is the National Academy of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine? You know, why are they writing about educational quality? And so that piqued our interest, and so we dove into the report. And one of the, one of the first things that we did in the introduction to the report, we came across this quote, and I just wondered, want to open it up and see if you have anybody who would like to read the quote to us, but I'm going to ask just if any thoughts or responses?
Yes, thank you. The ladder of educational opportunity rises high up the last thing. The scarcity rises at the doors of others. While at the same time, normal education is made a prerequisite to occupational and social advancement. And education may become means, not eliminating race and class extinction, but a deeply worth fighting.
Reactions are. The the questions of inequity in education and kind of how we're figuring this all out, this isn't, isn't new. All right, it's it's there are challenges that the system has faced for a long time. Sure, have any other just observations or things to throw in? Turn to what they suggest we do about it?
It said that we are where we are, that something said and profoundly said in nineteen forty seven is still applicable and accurate here in twenty twenty two. That is as sad as it is profound, as it is motivating, as it is, as already felt. It's as painful as it is for everyone.
Let's go to the next slide. So this report looks at, you know, if you if you want to think about overcoming or addressing inequities in the educational system, they suggest that you pay attention to some indicators in your school system. And it's not even broader than the school system. In some cases, it's in the community, right? It's not just school system. But and the big upon for us is that a lot of the conversation that is happens around equity, equity in education is with the outcomes, disparities, and all things of that, which is essential, but it really focused on just the top circle, which is outcomes. And outcomes are essential to be paying attention to. So there are three domains that they talk about in this plan that if you can address the disparities within these domains of outcomes, you can have, you know, a stronger outcome, ultimate outcome for all of our students and their educational attainment. But the first one, it looks at kindergarten writing test. So pay attention to how well prepared the young people are when they come through our doors in kindergarten. And increasing and supporting the development in that area. The second domain looks at learning and engagement. And they have a variety of metrics that they look at or goes down to the level of, you know, attendance is a metric for engagement. You could be looking at student survey results as a metric for engagement, learning, you can look at grades, you can look at, you know, outcomes on state assessments, there's a lot of different things. And the third one is educational attainment. Paying attention to graduation, paying attention to post secondary options and plans. Paying attention to any consequential differences in students or student works in those areas. But the real eye opening one for us was also to about access. Right? So paying attention to the extent, there are four domains in this area. One is the extent of racial, economic, and ethnic segregation, both within the school system, in the schools, in the classes within a school. Okay, so really digging into that, what kind of access do do young people have to the resources that are present? The domain E is access to high quality learning programs. This is one domain that's been that essential in the research. Equitable access to high quality curriculum instruction and then equitable access to supportive classroom environments. So when we come together and the board planning team, we actually organize our data, the data we gather into these domains and areas. And we gather the access data and we gather the outcome data. And that helps the framework that we use to make meeting access. So it's just a preview. If you want, if you're interested in the report, I can get it to you. It's like two hundred and forty pages.
You can nerd out on it.
You can totally nerd out on it, yeah. We can go to the next slide. Okay, so for for us, for performance stats, what we talk about, when we talk about equity, is about equitable access. So we want to ensure that we have equitable access so that we can get equal outcomes for kids. So equitable access to resources, to opportunities, to quality learning, you know, and to just affirming experiences in their schooling and in their lives so that we can get equal outcomes for every student, without exception. Sometimes people will say equitable outcomes, but it's we see this as kind of like a misstatement. We don't want to change our vision or limit our vision for students or for young people based on where they are. And we want to support them all to get to equally high outcomes without exception. And next slide? This is the best slide of the day. Okay, so what are some of the things we're going to look at? We're going to just share what data we're going to gather, we're going to listen to voice, next slide. We're going to look at outcomes data. There's just a sampling of some of that data now. And then the last slide is access data, but you'll see more of that later. We can just move through it. Okay, so one of the things that we did is we put together an equity snapshot. We do this with every district when we start working with them to get a picture of what's happening currently in terms of the state of the outcomes for kids. And this is outcomes data, just want to be clear, it's just looking at outcomes data. So this snapshot is also in your canned out a little bit larger and to take a look at. So just to orient you to it, where the top line just has your overall enrollment. This is from twenty twenty one, each each year from the data set is in there in parentheses. You know, what percentage of the student population? The first district wide is that first column. So if you're just saying, as a district, where are we on these measures? That's there. And then you have it by race and ethnicity for the next one, two, three, four, five, six, seven columns. And then after that, it goes to those federal program groups. So economic, you know, students who get free reduced lunch, English learners, and students with I Ps. So the data points are kind of looking at that success in the early years, engagement by attendance, and engagement started learning based on the meetings based standards for math, E L A, and science, and then on track measures for coursework and graduation. So I'm just going to give you a moment to look at that. Remember, if you remember earlier, we showed you out of twenty, so we see a nine, that means nine out of twenty students. Right? So district wide, students in grades three, you know, just under half of the students met the standards for English, which are constant status evidence, which is just one measure in the eighteen, those are from eighteen nineteen. Yeah, those are eighteen nineteen. There's probably a whole year. Yes, I'm just giving you a moment, yeah, to take a look and then just. In terms of the shading, we tend to look at anything that's between zero and about forty percent or, you know, zero to eight students in the classroom would be, if that's the red, it's red. If it's from about eight, if you're rounding up to twelve, yellow, and then twelve to sixteen, green. And then above sixteen is blue. And we, you know, hope that through the planning process, we're moving from more red to more yellow, more yellow to more green, more. Yeah, we've already provided them lots of data to go through. And then, you know, we're happy to help assist in any other ways possible. There's certain things that we track that aren't necessarily part of what would be considered a nationally normed set of data. For example, number of students accessing internships or number of students taking A P or I P coursework, things like that. So we certainly will round out their their data set that they. This is just a, this is what we put together before we like make friends.
Yeah, before we say that.
And so, yes, all of that, we have a full, you know, we're going to meet and we have a full download of all of the data for these different indicators we put together, the whole picture. Yeah, that's great.
And then when you see those indicators that we have, then you know what happened.
And what we do is we ask for the indicators aligned to those domains. And it includes, you know, internship completion, includes both secondary achievement. It includes student perception, right? There's lots of things on it. All right, so any questions or comments you want to make before we move beyond the equity snapshot and just lift our gaze up to a future yet to be imagined? All right, I think for time, I'd like to just kind of pivot this a little bit and invite you, we're going to talk a little bit about Portrait of the Graduate. And I just am going to invite each board member to just share what he thoughts once we take a look at it. So we can go to, actually, it is leaving there right now, just in the slide. We'll go into our materials. So in your folder on the right hand side, there's an article, very brief kind of article overview that talks about what a graduate profile, we could refer to graduate, but is, and I'm just going to, and then there are some sampleized, bless you, three sample graduate portraits that we you can pull out and take a look at. And I'm just going to invite for the next five minutes, if you want to take a look at the, either you go, it's sort of a choose your own adventure, whatever you're feeling under the network for right now. Okay, so if you want, I'd encourage you, if you want to be like, I really want to wrap my head around what the whole idea around Portrait of the Graduate is, I'd invite you to read the first few pages of this. We're just kind of scanning. If you would rather sort of learn by looking at examples. We have two examples of portraits from districts that we've supported. One is Gatama. And so this is the Gatama Portrait of the Graduate that we worked with them in their strategic planning process. It also has some of their other mission visions and other pieces on there. But you can see that where the portrait is. And then this is a one pager, this is from that one, I remember just finished up. I'm doing their portrait, so their portrait's in the middle of this spread in terms of what they articulated. So I'm going to invite you just to spend a few, five minutes to kind of produce these documents. And then I'm simply going to ask for each, you know, just share, you know, suggest that you share, you know, from everybody, but just kind of anything that resonates or that stands out to you in taking a look at these samples in terms of how you think about Portrait of the Graduate for. And for, sorry, for those of you who are online, I'm sorry to say this. If you advance the slides forward to, okay, slides are sample and in the. So here's one example. I don't know if you if you have the link to the slides. They have it.
They do.
Right, so slide twenty seven, slide twenty, it looks like the numbers are coming, twenty, eight, twenty nine, thirty. Lots of samples that you can take over. I'd love to hear just any thoughts, responses, questions, if it's something that you saw that you were, that were interested in or excited you or, you know, just whatever's kind of coming up. It is like here from everybody, it's very close after doing a lot of talking. So consider this your kind of opportunity to share whatever you want, your board members. But if you wanted to share any, looking at other things, you know, you got to get a portrait for the community. The online folks.
Yeah, anybody, anybody online who's not here with us want to share anything? Looks like Michelle has something to share.
Yeah, I loved how one of like the the profile of a graduate that Shelby County included was like responsible collaborator. I know, like, I've heard that a lot of, like, employers and a lot of, like, leaders are really looking for, like, team players and, like, people who work well on teams and not only have the skills but are able to apply the skills and work together. So I really like how they included that and, yeah.
I'll chime in a little bit and just say I really also liked the inspired innovator, especially just because of, as we were speaking earlier, you know, Washington County oftentimes is referred to as the economic seat of our state. And there's a lot of activity happening here. And I think that ties in a lot with our community and the type of industries that we have here. And the other one is that global citizen. I think that the world is so much smaller nowadays, especially for our students than it was even for me. Or many of our communities. it was even for me, or many of our community members, to realize that our students get to work with people from all over the world. And that is something that I think is really important that is highlighted there. So I appreciated that.
Is it, I don't really know what the board members are. Show that if there's anybody else on the line.
All, all four down there and me.
Okay. Well, I need this.
I'm supposed to go last, so.
Okay, great.
The lifelong learner stuff resonates with me quite a bit. iPhone, because we know we had iPhones 12 years ago. So we really, it's hard to predict what jobs or careers or fields or anything that are gonna be 12 years from now. When our kindergarteners graduate, how different will the world look? So the idea that you're gonna go into, I mean, how many of us have stayed in one career our whole lives, even, like, some of our parents may have. So the ability to adjust and react that like, you know, your job is to constantly be learning what the next way to be useful is, resonates with me and the critical thinker, curiosity, creativity, collaboration, those resonate with me.
I absolutely love everything about the Portrait of a Graduate, even the, in the quality studies sheet. I love how comprehensive it is, how comprehensive it is. And I think that especially coming through COVID, the interpersonal competencies are something that I think are huge and something so critical that students miss out on. And so for me, I love the resilient learner and persistent and continue to, you know, have a, a full mindset. And, I mean, just all of them, I think they're, they're so comprehensive, I think everything just fits into these categories. And I think.
I would, let's just see a recent profile of graduate in another way. And so when I saw it, I was like, yay, we're doing this well. And I think what was important to me, and I have the words of Dr. John Eadie in my head, from his principal at.
Lawyer.
Lawyer. Where my son went to school and he did, don't forget about the kids who don't learn like everybody else. And so what I found in, in just these three good profiles, I found enough where I can save my hand in and say, these children who learn differently are included. In other words, it's not enough for them, it's, it's not enough for me to say that I want everybody to be an analytical thinker just because I'm a lawyer. That's another one. The question is, how can a child who may not have that critical, who may be minus a, what do they call it, a, that executive function, how do they survive? How do they get what they need? And so that's really the key. How do we teach those sort of vital skills? And there's about critical, there's about creative. And that's what I'm looking for. And I saw that in there. And that, yes, we want critical thinkers, but some kids don't learn like that. So the question is then, what's their options? What is their option? And, and in some cases, it's creative, right? So that's what I was looking for and that's what I saw. And that's what, that was my heart comment, to know that we have the opportunity to say that it's not enough for them to have a 4.1 GPA on set. Because we know that one, well, you know, because although we've wanted that, we know everybody can't get that. So, so that's what I wanted to say. And I'm, I'm really impressed at seeing the depth and breadth that we can create so that it's inclusive of all children.
This is a point of exactly nobody who spoke in the future more than Charlie. I really like the ideas about being effective here, I think that's what I've learned of just like the most important skill that I have in my results. And I would very much like to see that maybe the foster parent or not just spoken communication, that great communication is any way to get your ideas across. And it's part of that aspect of working and it's part of that aspect of, anything else, even just being able to demonstrate the other skills that get brought up, you're maybe you have kids who may be directly connecting with them. And I think that that's the ability to share things across without making it more much important, feels important to have.
So I think similar way to Mark is the lifelong learner and critical thinker that stood out to me. With our age of information on the internet, we have so much access to teach ourselves anything. It's so important that students understand that learning doesn't stop at graduation, whether it's high school or college, it's lifelong. And that you can, you can study anything you want because of the access that we have to give to them, inform yourself.
Well, it's really terrific to hear that life resonates. Because I love the power that rests in having Portrait of a Graduate. And it's almost like it's a vision document, but it's also a, a guide to how we do school. And we're supporting our, our young people with intentionality, so that's not by circumstance or just happenstance that they become critical thinkers or develop those skills or effective communication skills, but actually by intentional design, starting regarding, and going all through the school years, you can really envision this as a guide and document to transform what's happening in school. So, so this was just a little taste of the work that I'll be doing to give you some sense of who we are and kind of how we approach the work. There's a lot more, a lot less of me talking, a lot more of teams talking when it's not a worker's division. But we are thrilled and excited and honored to be given the opportunity to work with all. I'm looking forward to coming back again in August. So.
How many board members are you looking forward on the core planning team?
Fewer than four.
So at the most three, at the least one?
Uh, yeah. I mean, it's really, I mean, we definitely defer to the community. Sometimes we usually see that there's one or two board members who commit to like being on the core planning team. And then sometimes there's also a rotation of like joining third day or different person. So everybody has an opportunity. You can kind of go, you know, as an additional person. So you can determine with your, with your team, right? What makes the most sense. But we're super excited to have a member can join us.
When we look at the wheel of participation, is it really the core planning team is where board members would participate? Well, there's, there'd be the ones who are, but yeah.
Yeah, you have your own team.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, it's that, but like, like, none of the other ones on the circle would involve board members?
So, you know, that's a good, that's a good point. Instructional focus sometime, I mean, I, when I just, I just finished up with Pottstown, which is in Pennsylvania, so, um, Philadelphia. And they kind of divided their board in all the teams.
I don't know that any of us are educators, so instructional focus probably not.
Right.
Alignment team, community forums, I could maybe see some of that.
Yeah. I mean, it's the core planning team and it's the board is, are the main places, I would say. But, but it's, board members are, you're always welcome. So the folks who came to instructional focus team did more observing, I would say, in Pottstown than that community. And then the community forums, there usually was a board member or two who would come and would contribute to the forums. This is not what you need to, it's like your, your decision.
Mark, is it just that that you want everybody to have a moment to think or how they're to think about?
Yeah. We'll have to figure out ourselves, like, what kind of involvement we want to have. Maybe that's a retreat thing or whatever, don't we do any before that, but, yeah.
I think we might have to do this before the retreat though.
Yeah, we might have to.
We have also done it where we run a full, we don't have time, you know, to do this today, but actually let the board draft their own draft of a portrait. And then we still do the draft with other teams, but we kind of, to give you that, that time too. So we can also do that at the board's decision, it really depends on the board in there.
It'd be interesting to see what the board sees in the portrait and how it differs and what's similar to the community.
Any other final questions? All right. Thanks for joining us, Mike.
Yeah.
Welcome to the team. All right. Our next item is to discuss the student rep process.
No, they can't wait.
On page six of your packet, you have a sort of outline of where we are.
Mark, there is one typo on there.
Oh.
It kind of changes things. So on April 12th, so two things that we're looking for tonight is select the number of applicants to interview, not the applicant. So it's the number of applicants to interview. And then take a look at the interview questions that we have here. And then I think the other thing that would be helpful is to make sure we're clear on the charge of the subcommittee or the, the group of board members that will be engaging in the interviews.
Sure.
Those are three things we should probably talk about.
All right. I think traditionally we have interviewed everyone who has applied. We have a few more than we normally have, though.
Woo!
I think that's great. So does anybody have thoughts on how many applicants we should be interviewing? We have how many so far? Or how we're done until?
We have 11.
11. That's right. So we have 11 student applicants.
One of, we're clarifying, one, one of those may not be from the school that we're looking for. So there could be some confusion on that. We're clarifying that in tomorrow.
Correct. Okay.
So we have, maybe like.
We have two HOA, one, two, three, four-ish from Century and four, five-ish from Liberty. Yeah, Lisa?
Maybe. Okay. Sorry, my cursor's not working well, but I think it worked. So I am not volunteering on the interview committee. And I think that perhaps the folks who've given their time should have the final say on this and still be the ones doing the interviews. But for student representatives, for me, it feels like we probably should interview all of them. And if time is a concern, perhaps shortening the number of questions or something like that so that they fit into more condensed timeframe.
Rose, can you remind us who's volunteered for this space so far?
Sheen, yourself, and Nancy, express her answer as well.
So that if we interview everybody, one of the things we set aside is a Friday upcoming where there's no school, right? And basically that would be what we do all day?
It would be four solid hours and a lunch of interviewing with small breaks. I, in past, have broken up into 20 minute chunks and 15 minutes was more than enough time to interview. And like Lisa said, we could.
Right.
I am all down for interviewing all.
What's that?
What would, what would be the criteria to, to remove applicants?
Yeah. We have to go through, much like for the board appointment process and much like we've done for many of, we used to have like those dots on a whiteboard, but now we do it all on Google form. Remember? Dots on a whiteboard.
I'm, we're kind of kicking an old school, the paper, maybe we want the dots and the white.
Right. So much paper, we cut a lot of trees today.
One of the reasons would be if we had 30 applicants, we would, I, it feels like there's a number there where it's just not doable.
Right.
And so it would just be a screening of the applications and then.
Do they have any criteria that we say no, or, I mean, how?
It tends to be board preference, like, each board member would vote for four or some number that they would want to interview. And then you tabulate and see who got the most, whatever. So it's, I, I got a feeling that's probably how the vacancy is gonna go, because we'll have so many applicants for that and we won't be interviewing 20 applicants for board vacancy. So, so, you know, I think, I think I, I hit like RSVP that calendar thing. I think I did, didn't I?
Rose, did I do that? No, you haven't. I didn't. Um, I guess what, what I do want to say is that I'm a little bit spoiled by the process that I use in, in my day job where we have the metric and we have the rubric and then we have the same question and then you know how we want to rank all of those questions. So in other words, if we, doesn't matter how many candidates, you have the same question, you have a, you have a rubric for an answer that you're looking for and then you have a number assigned to that. If they hit it, if they, then they get that point and then everybody comes back together and put the points together. And then, so you use the rubric to meet the metric or not to meet the metric, but you have a more objective way of evaluating each client. Now, I just said a lot, so forgive me, but that's the way in my mind to make it ethical. If that's not the way you do it, just tell me the other way and I'll respect you.
That's how we've done it in the past. We, we've asked the same questions to each candidate, they're in your packet on the subsequent page, page seven.
Right.
And what we've done is taken turns asking questions of the board members who were in attendance. I don't think I participated in the most recent one, but I think I did the two before.
Yes, you did.
Did you, did you do the most recent one? All right. I feel like it was two or three though. Having, having been one of the people that was championing the cause of student representatives so much, I'm so glad I got a chance to participate in this. So I'm happy to do it again. And so, yeah. Whatever board member asks question one, they all ask question one, listen to the answers. And then at the end of it, the board members discuss which candidate they like the most and then the, uh, subcommittee makes the recommendations to the board of a candidate from each school.
Okay. So we, okay.
But yes, we ask the same questions of each candidate.
Well, we don't have like a number of rubric, we don't have a, I get it.
We have not in the past. If you'd like to create one, if you're volunteering to create one.
You know, what, what has, what we, we do on a lot of interview processes is that we do the rubric thing also when it comes to selecting staff and that kind of thing. But the other thing you could do is the subcommittee that's running this process could have a conversation before the interviews top start and you could identify what are the look fours that we're after here. And so that, that would help to calibrate things a bit. It's, it'd be a little difficult to put together a rubric with the types of questions that we typically ask. But if you look at these questions, there's not a, it's gonna be difficult to score in a really concrete way.
And I don't know, question three, what do you hope to accomplish? It can tell us that they're hopes. I'm not sure that I know what the job was when I was campaigning for election. So I don't know that they're gonna know what the job is.
Yeah. I just, I was just looking for where analytics in my hands and analytically think about this. But without that, I find myself a little swimming, but I'll, I'll, I'll bet. All, all about the vibes. And I'm sure everybody else is gonna appreciate that one.
Yeah. I feel like 11 is doable, so I'd be, you know, I'm part of the people that have, are fortunate enough to conduct the interviews, so I'm in for all of them. Sheen, you're in for all of them.
Yeah.
And if Nancy can't make it, the two of us can do it, so.
Nancy actually did a RSVP, so.
Oh, yeah.
And I think to Lisa, Molly, in terms of, you know, potentially shortening the, the number of questions that we ask, that's probably the next thing we'll get to. But I think that, for example, number six, that's more of a logistical question. So that's something I think we can just capture if they're able to attend the meetings. That's something I think we can just capture, create email or in the application, they allow us, as a, we're not that much of a, but we get some of this information that we separate from an actual conversation that we have.
Sorry, Rose just asked me a question. So apparently one of the students, I read them all, I'm willing to talk to them all, looking forward to talking to them all, really. One of the students might actually be from Hill High, not from Liberty, and maybe misunderstood the qualification, so we may only have. One of the students might actually be from Hill High, not from Liberty, and maybe misunderstood the qualification, so we may only have to. What's your, yes, uh?
Um, last time during the student interview selection process, and I think we talked about this briefly last time, I wanted to bring it back up. The current class of student representatives, like, talk to the people interviewing before the interview, give like some advice and try and sound like they're answering questions.
Yeah.
Do we still want to do that again? Because we do a lot of like volunteer myself.
I absolutely would love to do that again. I'm reluctant to ask you to give up the entire day, but if you're willing to do so.
Well, we did it as a group before, and you guys started doing any interviews that happened, like they had us all as Zoom call together.
Oh, it wasn't day out?
Uh, no, day of, but like the morning.
Oh, it was a group session?
It was like a group Zoom call before he started doing it.
Oh, welcome to the Zoom world, okay. Yeah, the very first round, or very first time we had existing student reps, I think they just sat in the lobby and chatted before we went to the other room or whatever. So, yeah, formalizing it, you know, where we, yeah, that'd be great. So I mean, and Michelle and Kaylee, if you're interested in this thing, we'd love to have all three of you participate, right?
They're invited on the link as well, but haven't responded.
So if we are, if we were to set up, let's say, interviews begin at 10:00 AM, if we were to set up a 8:30 to 9:30 informational session with the student reps, would that be what we're after? And it could be a Zoom-type situation?
I think so, yeah. Presuming that you're going to be doing interviews over Zoom instead of here. I don't know.
Oh, yeah?
Well, I thought that.
If they're face-to-face, then I can look at my calendar, but I don't look back at that day. I also have to sit in the hall being like, oh, you're doing something yourself.
I think we had planned to do the, some here, who can't make it here, interview them via Zoom.
We could do, I can, I'm not going to volunteer the rest of the meeting. Let me actually, I have my calendar linked here.
Yeah, we can work out for the current student representatives to be as involved as they would like, except they can't be in the room here. But that's about it, right? So I mean, so we would be happy for you to be involved as much as you possibly can be. Yeah.
If you're anything to do, then I'd be happy to do the setting in the lobby today.
But I do like the idea of a group session, and maybe that's the day before or something.
Yeah.
Or whatever, right? Or, you know, after school the day before, in the morning, what I wouldn't want is for the first person who is scheduled to be here to have to figure out a way to get on Zoom from a room here or something like that.
Yeah.
We can work that with you.
Yeah.
Time to get Rose and I working.
All right.
So, how about the questions? So Sheen recommended that maybe we don't need question number six. There, other thoughts on these questions or any other input?
All right, they sort of mentioned that in their application, right, number six, right, yeah, yeah. In my experience, by the time we get to seven, their heads are swimming, and they don't really have too many questions for us.
So I, I agree that six could be out.
Kind of addressed five in their application, but I don't mind hearing it.
Well, I, I think part of the process is for them to, to know or to recognize how to pull out what they've sent, submitted in their application, and then verbally present that. That's, that's part of this process.
This is just, I mean, even a lot, so a lot of question six, we don't want 15 minutes roughly, we got before we got through them.
Perfect.
So I mean, it feels like maybe six we don't do, and we should be able to get through all of these with 15 minutes. And that's the block two we have for us right now?
Yeah, we do a 20-minute block and 15 minutes.
Oh, 15 interview and then five where we discuss the first act, okay.
And then we just, we float in between whether they're face-to-face or whether they're.
Yeah.
We just.
Yeah, I'm comfortable, if you guys are, with giving the applicant the choice of whether or not they want to be a person or remote. You okay with that, Sheen? And then Nancy? Yeah, okay. Okay.
I am.
I think you asked for three decisions, Mike, did you get all three or?
I feel like we got two of them.
Yeah, I feel like we got two, what was your third one?
I think we will have questions.
I'm losing the third one.
So we rewound the recording. All right. Feels like we're good, though. All right. So, May 6th, Friday, May 6th, is a non-contact day for students, so they all should be available, right?
Yes.
Oh, Michelle has something to say.
Hi, Michelle.
Um, I just wanted to say really quickly that, like, I'm totally up to, like, helping, like, and meet with the student reps beforehand, and I would be excited for that. However, on May 6th, I have a meeting, I'm not sure like the exact start time yet, but it's probably going to be at 10:00 or 11:00 with other students across the district, and that was, so if it's the meeting with, like, the other, like, the potential, like, candidates is going to be around that time, I won't be available, but I am completely up to meeting with them in some way, shape, form, time. And then for the questions on the interview, I feel like a lot of the interview questions can be, like, kind of incorporated together in some way. Especially like, for example, how will you represent the views of a wide range of students? I feel like that might be one of, like, the answers that we're looking for when we look at the applicants. So I feel like, I don't know if that's necessarily a question that we have to ask, like, I feel like especially we're looking for applicants who are going to go out of their way and who are planning for those things, so I. But that's just what I think. I think it's important to leave in the, do you have any questions for us? Me personally, I wish I asked for more questions, but I feel like generally in interviews, I feel like it, them asking questions shows their interest in it and their, like, investment in this opportunity, and I think that it's good to have people that are invested and, like, genuinely interested in having those questions. So I think it's good to just keep that question in.
You could ask more questions, we have second guest, yeah, choice to come on board with us? Okay. Just a joke, don't worry. You're already stuck. Only got, what, two months left, somewhere like that? All right.
I was also, I was also gonna say, if we're interviewing everybody, then, you know, taking out a question or two, so that you have enough time for everyone and the students to ask questions. And the only other additional thought that I had about our, just our, our process in general, and I was going to ask it at the end of this topic, but now that we also have the Oak Street campus, you know, location, and we have big picture candidates, I wonder if we can open that up so that we include students that are participating in the, in the other campus, because they're all on one campus, but expanding so we can get students from that programming as well.
It's like, we'd have a year to put that together, so, right, to figure out how the logistics of that would work, so I like the idea of it in general. So, maybe we can figure it out. I like that thought, though.
Isn't it two comprehensive schools, and then two comprehensive schools, and for campus, it's already part of the?
But is it called Oak Street Campus, or was it called Miller Education?
Now, next time it's their turn.
Next time, right, so this, this time we call, right, so we can call everyone, I suppose, right, yeah. Okay.
But in other words, you're confirming for me that it's in the rotation.
It's already in the rotation, yeah, yeah. Yes.
Just to say, go back on last time, I saw what Michelle was saying in, in, if you're, Kaylee, don't be, tell me I'm wrong. I think what it might make sense to have, like, try to do a Zoom call, optional, for candidates, like, talk to the three of us. Maybe that Thursday, like, evening or afternoon, and then, again, if we're having, Michelle, in person, I can, yeah, like, break some meetings, okay?
Yeah, and if you, if you want to do both of those things, that's great. I do, I do think it's nice. In the past, when we've been in person and not on Zoom, I think we've heard from the students being interviewed that it was nice to see another student friendly face it. Because I'm, I guess you're pretty nervous when you get here.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I get the sense you were terrified, but all right.
No, I, I think, I think we agree that we'll do whatever we can.
Yeah, and I don't know if we need to drop questions, we got them in 15 minutes before, we could take out six if we want, but yeah, I mean, like, if we're thinking 15-minute blocks, we've been able to manage what we have in 15 minutes, so.
I know that question six is not the question to ask, if they have questions, that's what's possible.
All right, feels like we got a plan, and Rose will coordinate all of this. Oh, sure.
Yeah, I wanted to say, like, and I would advocate for, like, an in-person if we can, and I'm not sure about the availability of the candidates and such, like, but I think, like, having a Zoom call is really helpful, but I think that there is a difference of having it in-person and having the sense of, like, community, like, not community, but like, kind of like, I think that having it in-person really allows them to feel more comfortable with asking their questions and having more spontaneous, like, conversations. And feeling more comfortable with, you know, sharing their thoughts and opinions with each other.
Yeah, I think we have the mindset that in-person would be an option, and if they choose for virtual, no mark against them, it's just put their choices, right? So we're comfortable handling whatever the applicant prefers. Unless B11, whatever, goes crazy. Yeah. Don't even talk about Travis, Travis won't put his epidemiologist hat back on. All right, feels like we have a plan?
No, no.
And that's all of our agenda items, so discussion time. I haven't, we haven't heard Kaylee at all. Are you with us, Kaylee? Are you there? And if so, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, I don't know, I kind of made it towards the end, and it just, it's crazy to hear talk about different student reps, because we're the student reps, so it kind of sounds like, who else? But I'm very excited to start the process, and I'm very excited to help other people who are applying, because I really like this position, I really like being here. Or being with y'all, even if it's virtual. I love the in-person, too, I just, I, um, I just can't wait to welcome new student reps and kind of like pass the baton. Because I know that they'll love it just as much as we love it, or maybe even more. But I'm very excited, and it, I, it's crazy, because it feels like just last month, we were being interviewed.
All right, thank you. We'll go back and forth. Steph, do you have anything you want to add tonight?
Um, yeah, I'd like to say again that I'm really looking forward to the fact that we have 11 applicants for student reps this year, and have a bigger class. That means that we have more people in this day, and I'm really, really happy with the direction that we took in the district. I'm going to do, wherever I possibly can, make the experience smooth and comfortable for anybody coming in after us during the interviews and after. I'm also going to, once again, use this opportunity to say, high school theater is still a thing, I think there are still a few schools, I guess, from musicals coming up. Glencoe High School has been interactive, audience interaction, Merriest Street, Friday and Saturday, going to be very fun, you should definitely come. Um, and help support all of the arts and sports that have been trying to reestablish themselves over a really difficult year. It works my heart every day to see, like, the new freshmen we have joining us and getting invested in their schools again. Um, and I know it means the world to all of us, and I'm going to be supportive, so thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, anything to add tonight?
Yes, I would first like to start off with, I don't know if many people know this, but I'm in band, I play for a tour. Today, we had our Pacific League Festival, and for the first time in a long time, like, over 10 years, the Glencoe Wind Ensemble qualified for state and got superior ratings from all three judges. And that's like something that we're really proud of, we worked really hard on it, we were all super nervous, but I'm really proud of our band. So, yeah, cheer us on for state when that comes in May. And I think, like, just overall, I've been thinking a lot about, like, how, like, how quickly, like, time passes by, how it's like already April, like, it feels like yesterday that school was just starting, and I was just kind of, just starting on this position. And it's already April, and it's kind of like, whoa, what the heck? And it's senior year is like hitting me in the head. The other day, my grad coach was like, yeah, there's 32 school days left, and I was like, whoa, like, slow down. And it's kind of been, I think, overwhelming for a lot of people, a lot of seniors, not just me. But I think it's, I'm really excited for what is on the horizon for me and also for this board. I'm excited for the, you know, the next group of student reps that are coming in. And I, I'm glad to see that, like, COVID is, we're slowly really moving away from COVID, you know, and really just moving on from it and, you know, continuing doing what matters to us, and I really hope that the next group of student reps can really find that phase or find this new sense of normal again. So, yeah, hope you guys have a good day. Peace out.
Thank you. Uh, Mike, you're up.
I was just going to mention two things quickly. First of all, thanks to everyone that participated on HCU bargaining. That was, that was a lot. I mean, that just, that just took a long time, and like we said before, we've never bargained in such a competitive environment, and it it really did change the dynamics as well as, of course, the pandemic going, so just thanks to everybody that participated in that. I appreciate that. And the other thing I would say is, I'm excited about the strategic plan. I think this is the right time for us to be doing a more comprehensive process, and I think it will set us up well. We, and as a reminder, we have, next year is the last year of our current plan, and we've been doing work with our administrators to more tightly focus on, on the work that we're going to be doing next year, and I think that will be a great transition into a new strategic plan, so. I think it's good timing, and I think it'll serve us really well.
All right, thanks. Go back and forth again. Sheen, do you like to share, Mike?
Yes, absolutely loved the presentation about the strategic plan. It feels, it feels so good to be proactive in training somebody and close to being constantly reactive to the swirling, changing environment. And so, I just absolutely loved it. It was actually a very full circle moment when she talked about the portrait of a graduate, because at the NSBA conference that I had the pleasure of attending, I was able to participate in one of the sessions that was actually led by Kenny Hay, who is the author of the book. And who features a lot about the portrait of a graduate, as well as the portrait of educator. And so it was just such a rich experience being able to be a part of that particular conversation. And even being surrounded by, you know, educational advocates and passionate leaders from all across the country, it was, it was phenomenal. So I want to just appreciate the district for allowing me to attend, and a huge shout out to Rose for handling all of the logistics. I will say that there were about 10 different hotels that were listed as a part of being in, who had like the, listed as like a conference hotel. And all of it spanned even outside of like a mile radius of the conference center. And thanks to Rose and just her speed action, we were able to be right across street, group, and veggie center, and so it was like the closest distance, and it was, it was just incredible. So absolutely loved it. I think there were close to 5,000 people who, in attendance. While, not in, in that large of a social gathering in a while, but it was phenomenal. And to hear Warren visit, discuss some of the things that, you know, were featured at NSBA, and the fact that our district is now going to be entering into that is very exciting. The last thing I'll mention is, I guess, one of the biggest takeaways I have from the conference is just how proud I am of our district. It really felt like, in many of the conversations I was having with other school board members, we are really ahead of the curve in so many aspects. And I was able to share, like, a few of the people, you know, that I've had sessions with, just about committing to new trend models, and talk about the career, the DCAC, and there were so many aspects of what we do every school day, what you all do. That is just at the forefront of where we all want to be. And so I just want to appreciate Mike and your leadership, as well as the rest of the people in this room, for how you guided our district and where we're going to head.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, go online. Lisa, anything you want to share tonight?
All right, I don't think so. Thanks, everybody. I'm excited about the strategic plan and I too, Michelle cannot believe that it is April.
All right, thank you. What do you get? Anyone to share tonight?
Just to say, again, thank you for the presentations and the information, especially all the work I've been finding department is doing all budget updates and information that was great. And strategic session live very informative. Just work that everything's doing. Thank you.
All right, Erica, anything you want to share tonight?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, I'm feeling a little under the weather. So sorry I've had my camera, but. Um, I appreciated all the presentations today and I think like Chiyan mentioned. We are, our district is so far ahead. When you look at nationally, a lot of the, you know, issues and struggles that are happening across. Our nation when it comes to school boards. I think that we've never been as challenged in governance as this past couple of years. And one of the things that I did, um, find out was from a presentation that I went to was just around, um, really having. A good, a school board governance framework and found a really great example. And that's something that I'll be bringing up to Mike and Mark later about. Maybe for us and thinking also for the future, you know, there, how do we ensure that our. The way that we work and we function as a school board keeps a focus on our children and on education and not on, you know. Political agendas or things like that, that distract and make a lot of noise from our actual goals, which is education. So I thought it was really great, um, presentation and, and really robust. Information that's on their website so that even potential candidates that are thinking about what does it mean to serve on this board? And how do I behave and what is expected of me is really, you know, upfront. Um, so that people can understand that and have, you know, really good board governance for years to come. So that's something that I really, um, appreciate hearing from one of the districts. And, um, I learned a lot about the national association and also, you know, some of the challenges there and also just our region. So I'll be learning more, especially as I am part of the executive, um, leadership at OSBA. Of how that connection and how does the national association help us more locally? Um, but it was very, very helpful. And it's the first time that I've gone and this is my fifth year as a board member. So I was like, oh. And, and you know, it just happened the, the pandemic really disrupted that ability to get a little bit more of that professional development, but I was happy to go. And I think that's all I had to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy, anything you want to share tonight?
Um, just a couple of things in closing. Uh, one, super looking forward to strategic plan. Thank you for allowing me to be transparent. Oh, I just didn't have that confidence initially on, but I feel totally different now. And, um, I'm really looking forward to diving in and hoping that I could be a part of that pivotal core team to help lead this effort because I think it's important. So thanks to everybody that made their available, made them available to us. Uh, I'm really, really appreciate that. Uh, second thing is echoing what, um, Sheun and Mark and. At this point, Erica said with regard to the NSBA conference, um, just an absolute thrill to be. Okay, it was as thrilling as it was terrifying, I have to admit. But there were moments when I was looking for my mask and I didn't want to be debated because I realized I was a five thousand of people. And then there were moments where I didn't have it and I was like, okay. So, um, honestly, I really felt like H3 is on point on so many levels. And then just, if that was a heartfelt thing, um, I have to admit for obvious and not so obvious reasons. I went to everything that was kind of legal minded, just because that's just where I'm a little tentative. And oh, and gee, I'm real important. I mean, I was sitting in a room that was arguably probably one of the more well attended sessions. And it was on the legal liability that have occurred since, uh, COVID. And it was amazing just to hear some of the things that people were dealing with. And I would just thank you that. Every time, in fact, we made them stay over, they ended up doing a two hour session or a one hour session. It was incredible. To see where everybody else was within the awesome of where we are. That meant a lot. So I just wanted to say that, um, thanks to Rose for bailing me out two times. And one weekend, first to not have a room and then to be kicked out of the room. It was just an amazing weekend. So thank you, Rose. And I mean that seriously. I also found myself being super excited talking to other board members from other states. Because we are on point with sharing financial data. Holy cow. I was bragging about how you speak to us and I mean, I'm bragging, they're going, your board does it? And I'm thinking, your board doesn't? And, and so it was, it was very interesting. I took a real, like, I actually dug it. You know what I mean? But it was, it was that heartfelt part of that. Um, and then the other thing I got to experience was other black school board members. That was pretty fun. I was like blown away. We were in a meeting. They have a group. Oh my gosh. So it, it was, it was exciting on a whole lot of level. All the things that you guys had said that was the reason why I should go, that's where I think we should go. So it was an incredible weekend. I appreciate the district for allowing us to go. Uh, and the last thing I want to say, um, this is kind of toward Mike, um, just so he understands. Many of you may not know, but my son, um, is at Liberty High School. He plays lacrosse. He got a concussion head to head with a six foot four. Senior cracked his helmet, cut his ears in two places. It was, we spent the night at A K L E R online art. He's been, he was on the concussion protocol. For about three and a half weeks. And the reason why I think this is important is so that you understand that in every step of the way. My husband and I felt supported from the coach, coaches to the trainer. Um, even to the ER docs. And I know you have no control over that, but I just want you to know that from an athletic standpoint, as an athlete, that meant something. Because it meant that you value the student athlete as much as you value the student. So I just wanted you to know that they handled it flawlessly. There are protocols in place. There's an app that you have to download if your child is hurt. I mean, they follow it every step of the way. And I was just really, really pleased and it was a really scary time, but that just made it better. So I felt good being on the board and it had nothing to do with the fact that I was on the board, but it was that that's the process. That's what they do for every child. And so I just wanted you to know that it's working.
Love hearing that. And Casey gets all the credit for that. He put that into place a few years back. So thank you for that, Casey.
Thank you. Uh, Yadira, we accepted your reservation tonight, but by my count, you still got three more left, right?
Yeah. Um, I don't have much to share. Um, snow was kind of surprising this week, right? In April. But yeah.
Beth and I are on a 4:30 column in the morning if anyone wants to join us.
Okay, snow overnight tonight, right?
I'll be there.
Yeah.
Snow overnight tonight, I think, yeah. Okay, uh, I wrote a bunch of stuff down because not only we just coast to a finish, but I have a lot of things to cover. First, just, yes, thank you for coordinating everything with NSBA and Sheehan is 100% correct. I could get up at the very last second, be ready, just in time to walk right across the street to the prevention center. And you made that happen. I can't appreciate that enough. That was amazing. And yeah, there's definitely a sense of pride when you're talking to other members of the district because of where, where we are, right? And just sharing our stories, just sort of matter of fact, um, like of course we do it this way and, and hearing stories from other districts. So to this point, like your board does what or your district does what? Um, so you know, it, you know. As if I wasn't proud to be H3 enough, it, it helps when you talk to other board members and, um, I, I think your point. Uh, during one recent meeting of, you know, how we managed to maintain civil discourse says a lot about us over the course of disagreements and whatever in the national culture. I, I had one board member from another district say that they had somebody come in and do a presentation about. Legally, these are board member responsibilities. These are superintendent responsibilities, a black and white line. And some of her board members were like, no, that's more gray. This is, that's not how I see it. It's like, doesn't matter how you see it. That's the law. But yeah, so, uh, we're pretty fortunate enough to be able to maintain that over the course of the entire pandemic, despite all the upheaval in our community. All right. And now that the stuff I wrote down, so I wouldn't get too cavalier with how I brought things up. So, uh, you all have empowered me to work on the superintendent's contract. That's great. We do need to, at some point in a public session, because the Oregon attorney general has issued an opinion that a public body cannot discuss a chief executive officer's salary in the executive session. So at some point we, I don't know, am I asking us to do it right now? We're not, not prepared to, but we need to discuss sort of the guiding principles. Mike's obviously the, no offense intended to any other district, but the best superintendent state. So should he be the highest paid superintendent state? With other districts our size, should he be competitive with other districts in our region? What, what are the, what are the guiding principles we should be having as we discuss his upcoming contract? So I guess we may need to add that to a work session upcoming, um, but be thinking about sort of how, and it's very uncomfortable. I get that, Mike. But it's the kind of thing that we're required to discuss in a public session. So, um, just wanted to bring that up. To that point as well, um, we are going to be having some very long meetings here at the end of the year because of things that have gotten bump. And other developments have happened. So, uh, this I'm, I am asking for your input on, uh, tonight. Uh, we'd rather not, um, try to have two grand advisory groups go on the same night. Uh, we'd rather, so. As things get longer and we require more. Even more time of us. This is a little inside as to all the time and extra it takes to be fortunate. I didn't know it was a thing, but it's cool. Would you rather, play would you rather, you spoke to the kids, right? Would you rather start earlier, like at five or at four? Or would you prefer to go into executive session after regular session ends? Uh, if you have another creative option, I'm open to it, but those are the only kind of things I can think of as a way to accommodate.
Can we add, can we add an additional time with for executive session, like an additional day?
Your own meeting?
Right. Is that at all an option?
It is an option.
It's an option. Okay. So that's a possibility. Lisa, you want to add something?
I, I'm unable to leave at 5:00 PM, um, because of work. Uh, so I would be willing to stay later, I guess, to an executive session after, or Erica said, yeah, having an additional day. I'm also on board with hearing some things down that maybe are, um, fine to be like written reports as opposed to. Putting up board time if we're kind of in crunch at the end of the year. And we can't do everything, of course, but I should, there are probably some things.
Uh, I hear you said you could start at five instead of 5:15?
I can start at five. Yeah, I couldn't start at four.
Here please. If we can get that 15 minutes, I'm going to take it next time and I'll explain why in a minute, but. Uh, could, could everybody else start at five in the next session? Is that a possibility or is it just not possible?
I promise.
All right. And, and we'll look into whether some of this stuff could be. Put into a separate executive session instead of having to stay late next time. All right, this is the bigger one. So all that said. One hour of our next meeting is going to be allocated to holding a hearing regarding a complaint. Uh, I don't want to get into the details of the complaint now. It began as a personnel complaint in accordance with policy KL. However, it is no longer a personal complaint, personnel complaint. So, uh, that portion has been dropped, which means it's no longer a KL complaint. However, discussions of administrative team, uh, we feel like it's important to give the complaint the opportunity to have a discussion at the board level. So, um. Yeah, what, whether or not it still qualifies as complaint KL, the board can have a hearing on whatever they want really. So I think it's important to give this person, uh, hearing. Um, so after consultation with our attorney and OSBA attorneys, there is a narrow issue that we can discuss at the board level on a hearing. Which will, so be on the lookout for information regarding the complaint. Our intent is for all of the personnel information to be stripped out. Right? So the board will just consider the narrow topic of whether an AR, which is not required board approval. But you know, which we're generally informed, whether or not an AR violates our policies or state law. So that is the narrow issue that we're going to be discussing. Because there is no component of personnel in the complaint anymore, this will take place in open session. At the outset of our work session next meeting. It's a one hour procedure, which is why if we can get the 15 minutes, I would, I would take it. So we would start at five instead of 5:15, go five to six with this. Now is not the time to discuss the issue, but are there any general questions regarding the procedure and what the expectations might be for our next meeting?
So Mark, this will not be executive session. This will be at the beginning of the work session the next week.
Correct. Yes.
So what was the executive session during a separate day? What was that about?
We, we probably have some issues to discuss in executive session. Since we can't start that or shouldn't be starting that before five and maybe don't want to stay late, we can look into whether or not those issues can be addressed. In a separate executive session that's held, maybe over Zoom or something like that, or maybe I would come in or whatever. But yeah, like we're, we're at the time of year where we have issues that need to be conducted in executive session. It's publicly discussed the superintendent's evaluation today. So that's a matter of public record. So I mean, some of that process needs to be wrapped up. So, uh, we can look into whether or not that could be held as a separate executive session. Otherwise we have a very jam packed meeting already planned for April 26, 26.
Do you have a question about the, I have a procedural question about complaints?
Sure. I'll, we'll try to answer.
Is procedural only? Is it standard for us to have this body and for that to be just for a complaint to be brought to this level?
According to policy KL, uh, when a complaint is made. The investigation, various steps that which it goes through, and then the board level portion of the complaint is if the complainant. Is unhappy with the decision made by the superintendent for the superintendent's designated. Then the board would consider whether or not, um. I will return, but like whether they agree or not with the superintendent, superintendent designated. That's the board member's role in a, in a complaint procedure. The only one I've ever participated in was a. Uh, need to be conducting the executive session. So this is a, so at least it hasn't happened in the last decade or so that we've held a hearing in a public forum.
So, and so then procedurally, are we over, are we being asked to consider overruling the superintendent? Or are we asking to get, are we being asked to issue that opinion on the superintendent's decision?
So the way that this would go is, and Mark alluded to it, that we would be looking for the board to review that there, to confirm that there was not a violation of statute or policy. And if there were, if you, if the board decided that that was the case, then they would ask us to go back and start the process over. And dig in deeper to the investigation. It's not, it wouldn't be typical for a board member to do the investigation.
Right.
It's not like that. It's really to determine if, if those, either of those two things have happened. If the board deems that that's happened, we are told to do it over basic.
Right. We are not the investigative body.
That makes sense. So then my last question is, are, are you allowed to share the statutes that are at issue?
So those, they'll be made evident in your materials before we get to the hearing. You'll have, all of the information relevant will be in your packet materials during the hearing. And the complainant has been invited to come here and give a presentation, uh, regarding their complaint.
Thank you.
And then the board would also have their legal counsel.
Yes.
President has me.
Yeah, president.
Yeah.
And.
And the complainant then has the opportunity to have their counsel present as well or representation.
Maybe, yeah, I suppose. We'll try to get the information out pretty soon. We'll try to get the information out pretty soon. It's mostly ready, I think. So that if you have other questions for our legal counsel, please send them to me and I can work with him to, to find answers to those questions. But mostly, yeah, mostly, mostly it will be a lot of pages of information that you need to review before we get into the room. And I, I don't think the students will have access to that information. So you are board members, but you aren't elected, just like you don't vote on things. I think your role in the hearing will be to be here or be present online and just listen. And especially since it's going to be in a public forum, just like everybody else who's sitting in the room is able to listen. So I'm looking right at Seth, but you know. So then, so yeah, so I don't think the students will have access to, yeah, pretty sure the students won't have access to that information.
And also, and also would not be able to participate in that discussion either. Just because the, it's a formal complaint that goes to the board, to the elected board.
And there will be time for questions and deliberations at the end of our hearing procedure. So we are roughly finalized the, the way that proceedings will go. Which, so I think I can talk about that. So like, the district will set the stage. The complainant will give their, crux of their complaint. The district will respond and then the board will ask questions and deliberate. I think that's roughly how it goes, right?
But I think we just heard two different things. Right me if I'm wrong. Mike said that the students actually wouldn't be in that part of the meeting.
They could be here. Anybody could be here. Everybody's in public. Everybody could be here. But the students will not be able to ask, student board members not be able to ask questions and be part of the deliberation at the end of the proceeding. Any other sort of procedural or general questions? So that'll be the first thing and we'll probably plan to start right at five as opposed to 5:15. So five to six, that's what we'll do in our next work session. I think I managed to keep all of the personnel stuff out of it. All right. Why I wrote it down? It's off the cuff. I don't know. But all right. Are there no other questions? I think we are adjourned for today. Oh, yeah.
Can I just ask if anyone else would like to go to the Crystal Apple Awards dinner next Thursday? Because the deadline to purchase tickets is in two days.
I would encourage you to attend. It's, it's amazing. It's, it's an amazing celebration of the great work being done in our district. It really is. So encourage you to attend. And I would encourage, if you're on the fence about, I know time away is difficult, but if you're on the fence about attending the OSBA convention in Benton in July, I would highly recommend that as well for coming out. You really get a chance to meet board members from throughout the state with various perspectives and understand that we all just have best interests of students at heart. And, and then come back all energized with a bunch of great new ideas. So highly recommend that as well. All right, we are adjourned.